Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's Shakopee School Board Meeting from Monday, November 26, 2018. Sarah, would you please take your role?
Bob Arden.
Yes, ma'am.
Sally.
Here.
Mikiyan.
Here.
Pos.
Yes.
Tomzick.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. We'll move on to item two, which is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's move on to good news items. First good news item we have today, we've got three really exciting ones. Can I ask anybody that's here for kids voting to come on up? Any kids' voting representatives? Come on up. Go ahead, come on up. I'm gonna read this here while you're counting up. All right. On Tuesday, November 6, nearly fourteen hundred students from Shakopee area schools cast their votes in the fourteenth annual Kids Voting Shakopee Election. As part of the program, students learn about voting, the importance of an informed vote in their classroom, and are encouraged to discuss the issues and candidates with their families. The lifelong lessons these students learn in casting their votes is invaluable. We'd like to recognize everyone in the Kids Voting Steering Committee, our teacher leaders, and volunteers who made this yet another successful year. And we have Jenny Ames. You wanna give us a wave, Jenny? Autumn Wardin.
Right here.
Wardin, all right. Bob Greeley. Drew. Help me with the last name.
Gordon Beal, that's me.
Oscar. What he said. Lynn Schmew.
No.
Nope, not here. All right. Deb Edmondson.
Edmondson.
Edmondson. Mark Burry. Mark here. Nope. Paula Rizlin. Nicole Clifton. No, Michelle Halloran. And then we've got Hanlon. We've got teacher leads. We've got Mary Corner from Eagle Creek. Mary. Tim Olene from Jackson. Terry Oskerson from Red Oak. Shawna McCauley from Sunpan. All right, we've got a lot of people here. Heather Hendrickson from Sweeney. Kristen Ganya from East Middle. And we've got Tara Schneider from West Middle. And Connie Mendez from Saks. Nope, yes, no. All right, and we've got two volunteers, a mother and a son team, Brianna and Tom Werser. Are you here? Are you, Tom?
Yeah.
All right, Tom, you know what I think? I think since you're the volunteer and you are the student, you wanna give us an update on how it went this year?
Yeah, I think, I think this year was really, really good because, I mean, like every year, it's the same way, how, you know, the kids are able to vote and, you know, understand how voting would go and, you know, when they're up to age, how they'd be able to participate in a really, really important part of our society. And I think the way that it works with the kids, you know, at their age, getting in the habit of every two years going to polls and voting, it does a really, really good job of, you know, getting them to be involved in their community, to participate and make the country a better place.
Thank you for volunteering. I, any of our teacher leaders or volunteers have anything they wanna say about this year's program?
I just wanted to say that the invitation was extended to everybody on the committee and all the teachers, but they couldn't make it, so...
Excellent, okay. Well, thank you for being here. We do have all these fabulous certificates that are su-- yeah, go ahead.
I just have one quick thing. So, we did a district-wide activity, and there's a wish tree that's at the front entrance, and all the students put their wishes on, and so we have a wish tree out there, so if you wanna stop by and grab a few on the way out, that would be awesome, and you can kinda see what the kids had to say.
All right, great. Can we do a photo with everybody that is present? Can everybody together? I think what I'll do is, I will ask Jenny, do you know all of these individuals that are here? Would you mind in the launch of this interview? But I'm just gonna wrap it up.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Bob, come on up.
Thanks.
Let's get shot with everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Hold on, can you get it?
Same.
You got it.
Same.
All right, awesome. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Plenty of room. All right, now, I know there's a lot of parents who are gonna be interested to hear about this one. Our students are reaping the benefits from our College in the Schools Program in partnership with the University of Minnesota. The CIS program gives juniors and seniors the opportunity to earn college credits by taking University of Minnesota courses at our high school. The University of Minnesota recently released the 2017-18 Value Statement for our district, which quantifies some of the benefits to our students and families of participating in the College in the Schools. It shows that, you ready for this? It depends on, three hundred and seventy of our students registered for a combined total of seven hundred and twenty-seven classes during 2017-2018 school year. Ninety-five percent of those registrations resulted in grades of a C or better to our students, and they earned almost three thousand U of M credits. And a fast fact, Mr. Rolowski provided to me, at a cost of four hundred and ninety-two dollars per credit, that is a savings to our parents of one point four million dollars in credits to the University of Minnesota. Job well done to all of our CIS teachers. So, go ahead and stand up if you're one of these fantastic CIS teachers. And I... (applause) Carmen, Chris, Rachel Dron, Catherine Tavkey, Brenda Costello.
Costello.
Costello, nice. Carmen Barbone, Wade Loughlin, Anna Bonderson, Brandon McNally, Josh Thon, John Miller, Ed Moisel, and Emily Brozda. All right, and we also wanna recognize, I know she's here, Nancy Tool, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Erin Heilmann. Is Erin here? There she is. Hi, Erin. High Potential Innovative Programs Coordinator for your continued leadership and support, not only to the programming, but also to the teachers. So, anybody have anything they wanna say about CIS?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, well, not long before, but yeah, long before I was on the board, it was an investment made in our teachers and our students. It was, it was a conscious decision to invest in CIS programming, and I want whoever made that decision, whatever board was here, and maybe some of you were, I wanna thank you because personally, my children are benefiting from this right now, and the teachers are outstanding in this program. So, thank you very much, teachers.
And I wanna add on to that, teachers outstanding in the program, that I think the U of M, and I'll see if the teachers agree with me, what used to be said, it's some of the best teacher development opportunities that teachers have had. So, I think it's good for our kids, it's really good for our teachers, and good for our families.
Do any of the teachers have anything they wanna comment? Carmen?
Carmen, the senior player.
(laughter)
As a CIS public school teacher, I believe, is qualified.
I think it's just so beneficial for our students. I think one of the best things about this program, and when Judy Tomzick and Jim Murphy brought the CIS program to our schools in probably nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-six, I remember thinking, at the time, we had so many students wanting to go PSEO, and so we had students just kind of mass exodus going to Normandale. And this is one of the ways that we can keep our student leaders, academic leaders, in our school by having a program where they're able to earn those credits, but also staying in school and being the student leaders that they are. And so, I'm really grateful that we have this program so that students can have this concurrent enrollment experience, and also be really good leaders to other students in school, too. So, thank you very much for allowing this program to continue.
And if I'm not mistaken, Shakopee Public Schools has, has the second...
Next to Burnsville.
Um, number of offerings.
Number of courses.
Number of courses in the state, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, thank you, teachers, for continuing such an amazing program for our students.
All right, come on up, so, phone.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
One, two, please.
All right.
One, two.
All right, so we have Dan coming in. Yeah, we're not done yet. Choir, I call it, choir. All right. You can certainly stay. Remember, the invitation is open everywhere. Thank you, teachers.
You take picture tomorrow.
Okay, as our teachers are filing out, we've got another incredible group coming in here. Congratulations to six of our middle school students on being selected to participate in the American Choral Directors Association All State Honor Choir for seventh and eighth graders. And these middle school students are Carter Shook. Break your... All right, stand up, Carter. Ashlyn Davis. Ashlyn. Stellan Joyce. Come on up, Stellan. Jonas Garrett.
Garrett.
Garrett. Brayden Knutson. And Brett Knutson. All right, the concert was held Saturday, November seventeenth, 2018, at St. Andrews Lutheran Church in Mata Mida. We would also like to recognize our teachers, Karen Van Sickle. There she is. And Gary Butler.
He's on his way.
Weird. For a job well done. Karen, would you like to say a few words about the concert?
Gary's the talker.
Okay.
Um, but I can kill time till he gets here. No. Um, we are honored that every year, that we, number one, that we get the opportunity to do this, have this awesome experience for these students. Every year, as part of a member of the ACDA, American Choral Directors Association, we're able to audition any number of students from our schools, and they're held to a very high expectation. They're judged from all around the state, students who audition, and every year, we're very fortunate that we have students accepted. Last year, I think, was our highest amount, but this year, it depends on the competition, but around, from around the state, that these students have, are excellent singers and are always very well-prepared. And the concert is always an exceptional performance as well, so. And it's, there's a girls' ensemble and a boys' ensemble, so it's seventh and eighth graders all around the state, seven, eight boys, and then seven, eight girls together. They rehearse with us. We're got, we get music about, like, what, a month ahead of time? And they have rehearsal tracks they can practice with, and they meet with Mr. Butler and myself off and on, before school, after school, to make sure they're prepared. And then on Saturday, they go up to Mata Mida, and they rehearse all day. They register between seven-thirty and eight in the morning, and they have about four different rehearsals with the clinician, and sectionals with other high, other choral directors from the area, and then they put on the performance at five-thirty. This year, the boys went first? No, the girls went first this year, and then they switch out and have the boys go. And there's a hundred and twenty-five students, I believe, in each of the choirs. So, these students were selected from around the state as part of a hundred and twenty-five members for each choir. So, they've done a great job, and it's an honor that we get to do this every year.
Gary Butler's just joined us.
Hi.
How much you'd like to make, Gary? A bunch of your opinion?
Um, how proud I am of them. I had a student two years ago that said, that made it in, that said, told the newspaper lady, "Well, Butler doesn't give up till it's perfect." So, I'm sure Ms. Van Sickle did the same, but I don't give up easily. I make them go again until it's worthy of what I think they have a viable chance of getting in, 'cause I've been on the other end where I've listened to a couple hundred recordings, and I know it's likely. So, this was an accomplishment for them.
So, for the students, what was your favorite song?
I liked...
I liked Favorite Things.
Favorite Things? There's one else?
DSire.
If I would have to choose, it would definitely be Nine Hundred Miles.
Um, CC Ni No Huh, just that's how we do it.
Good.
That's so interesting.
Yeah, that's kinda...
Ah, that's really cool.
DSire is a Latin text from the collection of texts usually used by composers in Requiem settings. And I think that's pretty cool, that they give junior high, you know, middle schoolers a text like, that's hundreds of years old, and that ends up being their favorite song.
Almost every year, there are like, there are songs in foreign languages as well, too. So, it's a challenge, and they always rise to the occasion.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, listeners, here you go. Ashlyn, congratulations to you, too. Stellan? Are you here? You, Jonas. Congratulations to you. Brayden? Are you here? Congratulations. At least, you know, that's... All right. Want to move into the...
Yes.
Where the TV doesn't get a glare.
Are you on this?
Oh, right here in the middle stretch. Right here.
Yes. The stars are where you're...
I just sent you a couple pictures.
Oh.
I was gonna say, it's a poster.
Yeah. All right. Photo? Want to move into the...
Yes.
Where the TV doesn't get a glare.
Are you on this?
Oh, right here in the middle stretch. Right here.
Yes. The stars are where you're...
I just sent you a couple pictures.
Oh.
I was gonna say, it's a poster.
Yeah. All right. Photo? Want to move into the...
Yes.
Where the TV doesn't get a glare.
Are you on this?
Oh, right here in the middle stretch. Right here.
Yes. The stars are where you're...
I just sent you a couple pictures.
Oh.
I was gonna say, it's a poster.
Yeah. All right.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Paula Rizlin.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all for doing this.
Yes, thank you for making it.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you, Gary, for coming.
I have no doubt there's a million other pieces of good news, but we're gonna stop there for a moment. Now, let's see here. Move on to item number four, and that is consideration of the agenda as presented with additions. The only addition, actually, notification we wanna make, I'd like to propose moving item six point one, district update, because there'll be some action. We're gonna move that under seven old business action items and call it seven point two. Are there any other changes to be amended? No? Okay, here we go. I'll intervene, motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Reg and Matt, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-same sign, and that motion carries. Move on to item number five, which is consent items. There came a motion to approve consent as presented. Angela and Sean, any further discussion?
Uh, I only wanna add that, you know, it's always tough, anyone chooses to resign, but I'll miss. We will miss the value that Mr. Cox, Ed Cox, brought to our district. Wish him well, we're that, but I wanted to be sure and call him out, what a tremendous asset he's been to our district.
Absolutely.
Yes, we're missing.
Good luck.
Good luck, man. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-same sign, and that motion carries. And we don't have no item six, so we'll move on to item seven, seven point one, which is acceptance of first reading of school district policies. Reg?
I bet they could just stop.
You should say policy for the main course, I may advertise right there.
You are.
All right, so to briefly run through this, and this will actually somewhat constitute a committee update as well, because we had this policy committee meeting just before the meeting tonight. You can see the list of first reading policies that we're presenting tonight. If you wanna take just a second, I'm gonna give you a few highlights that might influence your reading as you review these for the next meeting, when we go to seek the approvals. So, here's a few updates for you. Six thirteen, we decided to insert one of the six hundred series, we're gonna do those all as a chunk.
Yep.
But because of the graduation requirements that we talked about in the last meeting, and needing to move ahead on this, we decided to do this policy. So, the one that you have, and I think you actually even have one tonight at your place, has been updated to reflect all the current language, current requirements. There's a lot of changes, but that's just making it current and up-to-date. It inserted the graduation requirements that we talked about last meeting, so that's all consistent. And one thing that is removed, and actually this is to be consistent with MSBA, and I forget where it is in the policy, so pardon me for not looking, it's towards the end, but our policy retained language about you had to be within two credits to walk for graduation. That is still something we are adhering to. It's in the policy, or excuse me, in the handbook. So, we're removing it from policy, it's more of a procedural thing, but it is still there. So, I didn't want you to read that, but no, wait a second, don't we have a requirement? It's still staying the same. Okay? So, that's six thirteen. Two oh five was very simple, it's just adding the ability to have interactive technology so people can dial into the meeting. We've got a number of these that we're accepting just as is, so if you wanna note on that, it's two oh eight, two eleven, three oh six, four oh four, four fourteen, four fifteen, four twenty-one, four twenty-three, and four twenty-four. Those are all, we're just taking it as MSBA's discussion. And we discussed it as committee, but we didn't have any substantive to add. And then finally, three more that we wanna make you aware of. Two thirteen, this is the one about committees for the board. We felt that, while there's no problem probably having the MSBA title for the committees, we thought we would actually adopt the policy with our names. So, that's finance, policy, facilities, and then personnel. So, that's really the only change we're making to that. We also are making another subtle change in, Sarah, I don't know if you've got that change actually inserted or not, but suffice it to say, there's something in there about secretary for each of the committees. I don't think we've ever done that. So, we're just making note where that is, that the chair would be the person to report out to the full board on the discussions that the committees had, just as we're currently doing. Okay? Four sixteen is updated to...
Hey, Reg, before you jump off that one, so, two thirteen, you referred to the, going with our traditional board terms, that's, it's not stubbed up exactly like that, like it's...
That's what's...
The grounds, not facilities.
That's what it's gonna be changed to.
Oh, so, yeah.
Oh, some red lines are...
So, like, right.
Right. You're gonna get...
Some of them are red lined.
You'll get a version, because that's what we said in the, that's brand new.
Oh, what you just did.
We just did, we recommended.
Sorry.
Did you see one change in my...
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Makes sense? Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Yeah.
Okay. Four sixteen, you recall, we did some on chemical abuse and, I think, safe schools, that was updated in light of mental cannabis. That's all this change is. But one thing we did note, because this is involving particularly bus drivers, that we wanna make sure that when this is adopted, that we share it with whoever our provider, service provider is, because places require it on them. And then lastly, four twenty, this one includes a... It does. The only change is about a new requirement for the district that hep B, hepatitis B testing has to be provided at district expense to certain positions. So, that's a new requirement in the district, and we will have conversation, or follow-up, administration will have a conversation with that about that process. Just calling your attention to that. So, really, we're recommending accepting of all the policies, all the changes, with some of those little subtle points that I made. Sarah, I'm guessing that you'll insert some of those changes.
Yes.
You'll get those, and then the intent would be to act on these at the next meeting and approve them. Like we've always done, if you have any, when you go through, if you have any further questions or comments, should it be in the committee tier, I'll be sure that those are active along the way.
Okay.
One other process thing I wanted to note, and this was an enhancement, I wanna give Dave credit for this. It used to be this would come to the committee, and the committee would talk, and Dave, in his role, or now Mike going forward, would be sitting in the committee. It's like, you know, why don't you guys go back and talk about this? Well, we actually flipped that coin, and the time the committee got them, administration got them, and they also had time to then review those and bring those comments to the meetings, which is more productive and more efficient. So, we now have administration's comments as we're sitting there discussing those in the committee. So, note that they've seen this as well.
All right.
Okay. So, I guess I'm, I'm making the motion, or I would make the motion, to accept these as first reading as provided, as described.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-same sign, and that motion carries. Thank you, Reg. Okay, move on to item number eight, new business...
Seven point two.
Oh, that's right, seven point two. I gotta look in my paper and hand it. Seven point two. All right. It's all we...
Now, there are two documents here. One is a summary. I'm actually gonna, gonna spend a fair amount of time walking through that document, and on the very top of that is a statement that I think's really important and crucial, and that is that even though everything appears in order, Building Systems Holding, which I'll refer to as BSH from here forward, and its, and its subsidiary ICS Consulting, and the Shakopee Public Schools are continuing their efforts to make completely sure this is the case. And I do wanna say that again. Even though everything appears to be in order, we're continuing our efforts to make completely sure that this is the case. Arif from BSH, and ICS is here, Dave is here, Jeff is here, those are the folks mentioned on the top there. The relationship between ICS and our school district was paused on Friday, November sixteenth. This was to allow the two parties to communicate with one another and gather information to make sure everything involved in the current relationship is in order. And really, you know, in light of events that occurred in the past, the illegal activity of a former superintendent in connection with a former employee of ICS that started in 2012, one important thing to note in this timeline is BSH and Arif purchased ICS in June of 2017. At that time, they were unaware of the activities of Rod Thompson and a former ICS employee. At that time, it is my understanding that BSH acquired ICS, it was the first time that BSH had any business relationship with the Shakopee Public Schools. Shortly after BSH acquired ICS, federal authorities contacted them, inquiring about the activity of a former employee in connection to the illegal activity of Rod Thompson dating back to 2012. Arif has stated that ICS fully cooperated with the federal investigation. Moving forward, and I think that's the most important thing here is, we wanna move forward. The leaders of BSH, ICS, and Shakopee Public Schools are continuing their efforts to make sure everything is in order in three areas. Stewardship and oversight, it's very important, you know, as a superintendent and a school board, that we're, we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money and provide oversight when spending that money. The completion of the projects that are currently being worked on, I don't wanna lose sight of, there is an absolutely fantastic high, high school building that's been constructed. You know, there's still a fair amount of work to do. There's a punch list with over six hundred items that takes time to complete well, and then there's, you know, the warranty checks that go for a year after completion. And then the third area is financial relief. And if you turn to page two, a little more detail on these things. The stewardship and oversight, again, there's every indication that the contracts and the billing and accounting processes are in good order for the current work being done by ICF on behalf of ISD seven twenty. That said, this is, again, we wanna make sure, ICS and our district are voluntarily hiring an independent auditor to reexamine contracts and billing and accounting documents. ICS has committed to paying for that service up to fifteen thousand dollars. Completion of the projects, there is every indication, the onsite work of the ICS team has been of high quality. The employees have developed a deep knowledge of the pertinent aspects of the work being done in our district, and are therefore best suited to bring the work to a proper completion. They've developed, you know, what I would say is kind of an institutional knowledge. They know that project inside and out. That's not, that's not something that's gained easily. They're an incredibly valuable resource that I, I believe are going to do everything in their power to bring this project to its proper completion. ICS has been providing services, I'm sorry, I should back up. World Architects and Engineers has been providing leadership on this project, and that will continue. ICS has been providing services as the owner's representative on this project, and that will also continue with some minor adaptations. They're an incredibly valuable resource that I believe are going to do everything in their power to bring this project to its proper completion. ICS has been providing services, I'm sorry, I should back up. World Architects and Engineers has been providing leadership on this project, and that will continue. ICS has been providing services as the owner's representative on this project, and that will also continue with some minor adaptations. Again, it's in that vein of let's make absolutely sure. The change involved adding a bit more in the way of redundancy, meetings, and checkups to be conducted by World Architects and Engineers, school district personnel, and members of the ICS team. And then the third area that we've been working on is financial relief. There are a number of financial costs to the school district in dealing with this unique circumstance and working to make sure everything is in order. There's additional costs, pulling examined contracts, invoices, billing, there's costs to communicate, fulfill data requests, additional administrative and support costs, just in terms simply of time spent on matters pertaining to this unique situation. Arif from ICS recognizes the costs incurred by the school district. He is also very committed to rebuilding trust between ICS and ISD 720, and in restoring the good name of the company he purchased in June of 2017. As such, he has offered to provide financial relief to the district in two specific forms in addition to the parent audit. These two forms are, ICS will stop billing the reimbursable expenses for their employees working on the high school project from this date through the end of the project. ICS will also not bill the district the fees remaining on the high school project. These fees total approximately $218,725. At the conclusion of the project, at the sole discretion of the school district, if the district is completely satisfied with the work of ICS, the district may pay ICS up to 50% of the fees not billed. In other words, may pay up to a little bit over $109,000. Any questions on that summary, otherwise I'll continue into the agreement.
What's the timeline for selecting the auditor, and if you have any ideas, Jeff, how long that can take?
We've been, as you know, we've been working on this, you know, even over this break. I believe we've got a tentative agreement to, will you remind me of the name, Jeff?
Uh, KDB.
KDB? Oh, yeah.
Can we have Jeff and Arif, can you just...
Come on.
Sure.
And Arif has agreed to that, so that's just this afternoon that...
It's all on faculty and...
Time table, so...
So they will start the audit as soon as possible, looking back, what, five years?
I don't know that we put a specific time of looking back at the contracts. In some of the, well, we've got agreements to go back to February of 2012, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. So a little...
Six years.
Yeah. So...
So, yeah, we haven't finalized the scope, but it's going to be looking at those contracts, and then I think focusing on the reimburseables. We think, you know, contracts look like they're good. See, you know, here's the amount of contract, percent of completion, we made payment. So I think it's probably going to be more looking at getting into the reimbursable costs, and trying to verify.
And typically, fees are pretty locked in, I think it's the reimburseables that I'm always concerned about in terms of evaluating to make sure they're accurate, that they're being billed correctly, that they're appropriate for the project, and they're reasonable. So I think that's an important piece of doing the evaluation and making sure that that information's accurate, it was done correctly, and I do think going back to, because I think it looked like there's multiple whole contracts, I think it would make sense to go back to look at those reimburseables on those two through, what, 2012, when this incident started. I think it ties well in terms of those time.
Right, because the high school project came much later.
Yeah, this was not the high school project.
But the high school project came...
At diligence, we're going to look at any relationship that sounds like...
I think there's a contract that talks about the original contract, 2012, and then for the high school, it's like an addendum to that contract in 2015.
Yeah, it was either May or June, I can't remember the date, the month.
So as the audit takes place, if anything questionable comes up, how will we... What is going forward look like as far as bringing those to the board and working past those?
I think they'll start doing the independent audit, and if there are issues, we'll be notified, so we'll be alert.
In the middle of it, not at the end of the whole audit?
Um, yeah, I'd say, correct. Provide updates at the end.
I think the intent was if they do identify something, and something isn't right or is off, then we would make those adjustments as we go. So I don't see anything that, the reimbursement side shouldn't be that far off, but if there's something they do identify and say, you know, this should not have been built for this project, and it's overbuilt or underbuilt, hopefully auditors never find underbilled, so... But I do think it's important that we are informed of that, you're informed of it, and that we make adjustments at the end.
So I would summarize that to say, if any substantive is found, you'll notify us at the time. Otherwise, we'll have some sort of final report when it's all done.
I do need to ask, in reading here, it says that ICS, that you obviously, BSH, and now ICS, were unaware of the activities of a now former ICS employee. Was this, I just have to know, was this employee just recently left the company, or has, like, since you've been there?
Correct, since I've been there. We decided investigation internally in July, end of July of 2017. Took about through November, because first of all, we were cooperating with the federal group and making sure they had all the information. Once that was done, it was a lot of information all the way in 2012. There's old servers, we had to pull, we had to download a lot of information. We said we could give you everything. When I heard about this, I said, first of all, we need to get everything that the federal investigators need, and I think they got all that information. And then the second thing we did was internal investigation, because it was really hard to identify exactly who approved what and how it happened. So we ended up doing our own internal investigation, actually hired a former federal prosecutor for the company to say, go in, look at everything that's going on, I need the facts before I make a decision. At the end of November, we did a preliminary report of that, and then once that happened, we moved that person out, we said November 2017, and said that he has no authority to work on this. He was, he happened to be at that time also an owner. So we did move him out, and we ended up basically working through an agreement, finalized an agreement, and until then, he had no authority to really work on those, but that continued until pretty much March of 2018. We need to work through some real significant legal issues there that are still outstanding for us as a part of that acquisition. That will be continued.
I'm not going to read through the four pages of the agreement. I will point out, highlight some things, and certainly, you know, if there are open questions on that. The agreement is really more details to that summary document, if you will, kind of outlining and providing detail to each of those three areas. I would point out, under stewardship and oversight, letter A, number three, I'm sorry, number two, and this goes back to the question that Reggie asked. You know, in the review, is there any discrepancies identified, ICS has committed to recommending those. Completion of the project, ICS, if you look at B, completion of the project, ICS will continue to commit Chris, A, Dave, and Dana to the project. They have, you know, by all accounts, done very good work, they have been great to work with. And then there's still, you know, there's, as I said, there's still a substantial amount of work to be completed on punch lists and those things, I won't, you know, on the projects that we have currently with ICS, I won't re-do those. We want to make sure under, you know, towards the bottom of that second page, that we're communicating, we're reporting, that we're bringing people to meetings, and we've been doing this. This, again, this isn't, you know, it appears that all of these things in terms of media and communication have been in good order. We want to make sure, you know, from here through the end of this project. And so some of these meetings, you know, have been occurring, some we're adding folks to. And just want to make sure that we've got everybody involved that needs to be involved, and we're just, we're going above and beyond in this, what I would say is a unique and challenging situation. And then if you get to financial, it lays out what I had mentioned earlier. Explains on the high school project what ICS is willing to do in terms of capping fees and reimburseables from this point forward, and how that works. There's a summary on the last page, the projects, the reproductive project, the commissioning, the recommissionings, the low voltage project, and the stage of the audit.
One question, do we have, this is very thorough, and I'd like to commend everybody for the great work and being as accountable and transparent as possible. And I wonder, is there a date, an estimated end date, when we think these will all wrap up and we can report back to public what the net result of this would be? Or is it too soon to tell?
Maybe too soon for me to tell you at this point, and we can follow up with you with Chris on that. I think they were looking at some of the projects, especially field work, and those may continue all the way to 2020.
Okay.
Just because I...
Because outside, yeah.
Yeah, just because I understand you have some challenges of this area with growing grass, and so... So that would be the one, but I think a lot of punch list items in the next 11 months should be resolved. Commissioning will continue after that, because part of the issue with commissioning is there's a lot of issues that come up, and the amount of time it takes to get the contractors back in to fix those is very time consuming and cumbersome, so it's really hard to put a timeline. But we don't let go of that until it's all fully done. You kind of get exactly what you thought you were going to get, but it takes time. So I can't give you the exact date, but my understanding is by 2020, we should have wrapped up everything.
And I would add, correct me if I'm wrong, Arif, but that's consistent with the timing of the project. Nothing that...
Right.
Right, but for the benefit of the listening, none of that is different than the timing that we've been monitoring, managing from the inception of the program, expecting right. And that's why I'm personally gratified that this belt-suspenner approach is good, and it's appropriate, glad we're doing it. But I'm also gratified that, you know, the initial look didn't identify anything that was troubling, and that we're retaining ICS in this capacity, because as you called it, institutional knowledge. I mean, we've, Scott and I think have been on the committee since its inception, and most everyone's touched on some. The volume of work and the complexity of this is just enormous, and it's to credit to the folks that have been working on this, and the management of it has been phenomenal. So it's great that we're retaining that through completion, and I appreciate your participation in this process.
And I would reiterate that point, the project's on time.
It is?
Which is fantastic.
And under budget.
And I love it.
Under budget.
I'd like to reiterate that, having been here from the beginning of this project, Chris and A, and they have just been, they have worked very, very hard for us. They have ensured that we have stayed on time under budget, and in a project this complex, it's not as easy as just building from scratch, you know, when you're adding on to existing buildings. So I, for one, really appreciate the work that they have done to get us to this point, and I sincerely hope that nothing is found.
And I just want to say a few things about that, because I think that it was tough on those three, eliminate Phillips. When I talked to them, they really put the heart and soul into this project. I'm proud of what they put together, and then this happens. When we went through this whole process in the last few weeks, I got a text, just so I get something going, a text from Dave Phillips, who decides to pretend, and he goes, "You may have a black eye, but I've never been so proud of ICS." Because he wants to get back in there and finish the job, because it's important for all of us. I think to do the right thing, do the right thing for the community, for the staff, for the administration. We were excited about the project, and it's a heck of a project. And as you can see by looking at it, and to be under budget, which is pretty rare in this time and age. But I think it's a great project for the community and the property department, so thank you.
So I just want to commend Mike, and Jeff, and Dave for jumping on this as soon as we got the news. Obviously, we were all just as alone as everybody else was, because we didn't have any advanced knowledge of anything. And so, you know, thank you guys for jumping on this and recognizing the importance of addressing it right away. And then, Arif, thank you for your response, and just being willing to be here and, you know, tackle the stuff head on, as opposed to, you know, people could have just hidden out and made excuses, and, you know, thrown smoke or distractions or whatever the fact of the matter is, everybody hunted down, and all of this, please, and started to get to work right away to find out what, if anything, there was to this. So that's really important, to continue the healing here, to go forward, is understanding exactly what there is or is not to see, and making sure that it gets up there whatever capacity it needs to. So, thank you, and I also agree with everybody else, you know, A and Chris, you know, Eric, the whole team, they've been fantastic. They have been overly patient, they have been flexible. We have had lots of changes, we've had spirited dialogue to get us to where we're at right now. And the whole time, they don't take sides, they simply take it in, and they actively listen, and they go forth, and they execute on a plan that ultimately will work for, you know, the project and make all the stakeholders happy. So I'm really happy to see them back in the building, and today, yes. I'm sure that everybody else in the building is screaming, running around for listening. They were probably more happy to see them than we were, but yeah, it's been a really good experience. Thank you for what you've agreed to do to this point, and also going forward. That's a testament to your leadership as well.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Go ahead. If there are no further questions, then I recommend that the board approve the agreement between BSH, ICS, and Shakti Public Schools.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's saying aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to eight, of which there are none. And we'll go on to nine, we'll call Matt, you want to come on up? And we'll go over acceptance of our 2017-2018 school district.
So I know that, I think I've been reporting to the board on some preliminary numbers probably since September, or lost to what I was reporting even back then. I think that actually, this could have been under good news item. Mike?
This is why you picture.
Yeah. We've got just a couple of... Turn it over to Matt.
Mr. Chair, members of the boards, Lieutenant Redmond, thanks for the invitation to present the results of the 2018 audit tonight. You've got about 200 pages of material sent to you, and it's my job to make some sense of that for you tonight. I have had a PowerPoint that I think is going to be the best way to do it, so feel free just to follow along there. If you found something interesting in the information I gave you, please jump in, I'd be happy to expand on that, but I think I've got a good summary here for you tonight. And again, feel free to jump in or follow me away. The district has a responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public. And I think now is a good time to thank Jeff and the entire finance team at the district for their role in that. They were very helpful throughout the entire process, share the same goal that we have in as active financial reporting, so you as a board have good numbers with which to make your decisions. And as you're aware, it was also a year of transition in the finance department again this year. It's been a couple of years of transition. And that's not easy, picking up a $90 million budget and trying to make it run from scratch each year. And we've had a couple of finance directors in the last couple of years, and again, Jeff, with the experience that he has, and the team that he built this year, it's not like there was no issues on the transition going on. So thanks to you on that. I want to start tonight by providing the results of our audit, and that's in four different reports that we issue. And then from there, I'm going to talk about the numbers and the finances themselves to wrap up the presentation. Our main objective as your auditor is to give you an opinion on the financial statements, that you can trust them, that they are an accurate picture of the district's financial position, and we do that through the independent auditor's report. We're providing an unmodified or clean opinion for the 2017-2018 school year, and that again... means that that's the best report we can give you, and it means that you can trust the numbers that we're going to be working on. We also take a look at internal control. And internal control is the processes and procedures that you have here at the district to ensure accurate financial reporting at the end of the year, and also safeguard your assets at the district to ensure that they're used for district use. And we've had one finding for several years running regarding lack of segregation of accounting duties. You are a reasonably sized district, but at the same time, in, in the big scheme of things, the size of your accounting department or the need for the size of your accounting department is relatively small. And as a result of that, we don't get all the checks and balances that we'd like to see in a perfect accounting environment, so we'll warn you each year that that is the case. I think the finance team has done a great job of establishing some mitigating controls. We're confident moving forward, that we've got a good plan in place, and we remind you of that each year. And there is a possibility, I think, in future years, as the department matures, again, gets some stability, that there is an opportunity for lowering that comment or even eliminating it in future years.
Matt, I'm going to joke with you because I think now's the perfect time. We had two previously, and we were able to remove one this year, correct?
Yes.
So I think it's worth noting, if you could just say what that one was?
The other one had to do with the preparation of the financial statistics, and that is having the skill set onboard to actually prepare this document that you receive, the comprehensive annual financial report. A lot of complexity, a lot of Gatsby standards that your team needs to be up to speed on, and we were confident this year that the skills and knowledge were in place to accept that responsibility this year, so that one was eliminated for 2018. So again, as just as that was eliminated, that segregation of duties doesn't have to stay perpetually, you've got the opportunity of eliminating that in future years.
So Matt, on that piece, that's, it's something that we've talked about since I started here. It's never gone away. Just out of curiosity, if you were prepared to say so, how many additional FTE do you think it would require qualified FTE to ultimately remove that finding?
You know, I, I would say maybe, maybe one, if you utilize the team in a way that you could get to a place where, let me step back a second. It's not necessarily numbers so much, it's the duties that are assigned. And I think what happens is, is that you probably have enough people actually in place to actually achieve the goal, but it wouldn't be done in an efficient way. Typically, in an accounting environment, you'd like to have an accounting, accounts payable clerk, that that person can concentrate on paying the bills. You want a payroll clerk, let that person concentrate on the payroll. Have a controller, have a finance director, let them do their job. And if you let them do their job, we don't get the four touches that we like to get on every single transaction. So if you split the payroll person into part AP, part payroll, part this, part that, you might be able to get all those touches, but they wouldn't be particularly efficient in their role, they'd be jumping from task to task, and as a result of that, there's not a lot of value in that and probably in the end. So I think what I would do is have Jeff and his team look at the areas that we've identified where those overlaps occur, figure out if some reassignments can be done in a way that's efficient with the personnel that you have in place. If you get to the point that it no longer is, and it's apparent that an additional FTE is needed, then that would be when he would come to you and say, "I can get rid of this comment, if I can have this person," and here's what that person will do. Right now, I don't want to insert myself and say that this is how Jeff will manage his team or assign his team to the various tasks, I think I'd let him do that and then come back to determining whether or not an individual would be needed to be hired. Sometimes it's not numbers as opposed to assignments.
For context though, Matt, we have talked about these for a number of years. Can you provide, you're kind of on the spot, how common is this one in school districts in general?
Oh sure, it's very common.
So it's, we're not unique, we're not alone, it's just, it's really a question of, do we feel it's important enough to remove it if there's a cost associated with that, or do we just continue to accept that that's something we're going to do?
Exactly.
Well, and I got to believe that, you know, even if there was a cost associated with another FTE, it's not just about potentially removing a finding, it's ultimately being more efficient in your finance office, which is going to, you, yeah, assumingly think it would run a little bit better, not that they're running poorly, but maybe something that it's just an investment that needs to be made somehow, it couldn't just go away, but we can actually have a really solid, you know, understanding that what we're doing is to the best of our possible ability.
And, and you always have to evaluate cost benefit. You're, you're obviously trying to mitigate risk, but determining, quantifying what the level of risk is, and then comparing that to the cost of the FTE that we're talking about, that discussion has to be had as well.
Thanks.
The district receives a significant amount of federal funds, and the feds want to make sure that you're utilizing those dollars appropriately, so on a rotating basis, we take a look at the programs that you have with the federal government. This year, we should like the child nutrition, and we have one recommendation for you on that. You did put a procurement policy in place to ensure that you're following the new federal guidelines regarding procurement, but we found that there wasn't a paper trail to show evidence that you actually did the competitive bidding or the competitive shopping on that. So we're just asking that you establish some policies and procedures to ensure that there's documentation left behind to show that we did talk to two or three vendors to make sure that we got the best price available on that. I think we were told that it happened, and we don't have any question that it did, but without that paper trail, we were not in a position to provide that assurance to you. And then finally, we did a Minnesota legal compliance audit, and we had one housekeeping issue regarding clearing out the old outstanding checks. Basically, the state gives you a three-year period to ensure your vendors get paid. If it's still outstanding, they ask you to submit that to the Department of Commerce so that they can process that for you, or do your own internal investigation to get those issues resolved, so again, or housekeeping issues. So again, I think an extremely clean audit for the 2017-2018 year, some relatively housekeeping level findings there, and we had the good discussion on clarification of our funding duties, which I appreciate. Let's talk about the finances for the year. And I'd like to do that in the context of the budget. Really, the year is going to be a successful one. If you as a board establish a budget that you're comfortable with, then administration executes that budget on your behalf. So I'm going to remind you about the budget that you had for 1718, both the original and the final amended budget. The original called for 93.7 million in revenue, 93.8 in spending, a million dollars of other sources coming in, mostly from lease financing. And in the end, the budget that was originally approved for 1718 called for an increase in fund balance of about $969,000. During the year, you reanalyzed that budget, took a look at enrollment numbers, took a look at the spending that was necessary to get you through the year, and ultimately decided on a final amended budget that called for 94.6 in revenue, 96 million in spending, other sources of 1.4, and a smaller surplus of about $36,000 for the year. The goal was pretty much to do a break even budget on that $95 million budget for the year. We take a look at the actual results. Some challenges with the, there we go. Revenue actually came in better than anticipated. It came in at $95.1 million, that's about $435,000 better than anticipated, which is good news. The bigger news, and the better news, I think, is that there was only a half a percent variance, and that means that the revenue projections that you as a board received were very good. When you were told this is the revenue stream we're going to get, that's what you got, and you could count on that that was going to be the case, so no surprises at the end of the year. So a very well executed, very well projected revenue budget. The positive variances were in the areas of state aids and property taxes coming in a little over budget. Now, on the spending side, the district spent $94.2 million during the year, and that was $1.7 million less than you as a board authorized for spending in the general fund. If you look at that $1.7 million, you can break it into four different categories. One of them was an unused contingency. You had kind of a rainy day fund or an unexpected fund set up in the, in the general fund. You ultimately didn't need to utilize that for 1718. The district did a nice job in conservatively executing on the instructional budget for the year. Some of the capital purchases that were authorized ultimately didn't execute, and on the other side of it, there was some challenges, the electric, the utilities, electricity specifically, you're a little bit over budget on the sites and building category. Putting all those together, though, the district spent $1.7 million less than, again, you authorized for the year. So rather than a break even here with a small surplus of 30,000 or 40,000, actually you increased the financial health of the district for 2017-2018 by $1.8 million, taking you to a total fund balance of $2.8 million at the end of the year. I'm going to give you some details on that, just to leave it. I want to talk about how you got to those numbers first. And the first thing we're going to do is talk about enrollment. And enrollment is the key when it comes to the district's finances. And we can look at enrollment a couple of ways. One of those is the residents that live within the district boundaries. These are the students that live within Chalkville boundaries, whether they attend here or not, and that's your baseline. And that number has been growing each of the last several years, in about a seven tenths of one percent increase, 17 to 18, going from about 91.20 to 91.85, and about eight and a half percent increase over the course of the last five years on that. Now, we do two things to that number before you're paid on it. First of all, it gets weighted. The secondary students receive a 20% premium over the elementary students when it comes to funding from the state. And we also have to factor into the equation the open enrollment. And that means that your residents can leave the district to attend neighboring districts, and also non-residents can come to your district to be educated. And traditionally, you've had a net loss on that, but that net loss has been shrinking over the course of the last few years. Go back about five years, you were losing about seven students for every one student that you brought in, and that's shrunk now to about a five to one ratio. So we're moving in the right direction when it comes to that. And also, the total number of students that's being educated here has grown over the course of the last five years as well. That's important as you look at the district's financial health. You want to make sure, obviously, that you're growing that revenue stream, and that is mostly done through the enrollment process. One thing I do want to point out to you, though, is that while you're growing, the level of growth has been shrinking and starting to level off and plateau. That's one thing to be conscious of. You've enjoyed that growth over the course of the last several years, that three, four, five percent rate, that's dropped below 1% here in 2018. That's going to pose some challenges on revenue growth going forward, but for right now, again, we've seen a pretty steady history here in the last few years when it comes to the growth in the general education revenue that you receive as a result of that. And when we look at revenue for the year in the general fund, revenue is up about $2.7 million or about 3%. So that's good story. Obviously, when revenue is flat, that poses some additional challenge to the district. With that growth, that provides you some opportunities to shore up your financial health as well as to kind of, some of the tough decisions you had to make over the course of the last couple of years kind of cushion that blow a little bit. The levying was up about $650,000 for the year, going from 13.3 to almost 14 million. That was mostly, though, in the area of long-term facilities maintenance, so it's just capital dollars, so those weren't necessarily dollars getting to the classroom. The big growth was in state revenue, about $2.5 million increase there, and that was mostly from the enrollment and the general education aid received from the state, 2% increase in your formula, as well as the growth in the students served. You're also going to see the other source of revenue is down this year, about $400,000. Back in 2017, the district utilized a lot of its backed up federal money from prior years, spent that down, and as a result, those previous year dollars weren't available, and you're kind of back on track with your federal money for the year. So that's the revenue side of the story. Let's take a look at the spending. I'm going to take you down, I'm going to skip a few pages as we go through this. And I want to talk about the fact that overall, the district spent $3 million less in 2017-2018 than it did in 2016-2017. And I've got a chart here that shows the detail of that. Back in 2017, you spent $97.2 million, and this year in 2018, you ran the district with $3 million less of $94.2 million. And what I think is important is to take a look at your priorities as a board, where the cuts were made, and ultimately where the savings were made as well. And if we take a look just at the top there, you're going to see administration costs, which is the office of the superintendent, the principals, the directors here, and that was actually about $200,000 less in 2018 and 2017. District support, which is human resources, technology, business, also spent about $200,000 less. When it comes to instruction, though, those were relatively harmless. There was a small cut in regular instruction, about $100,000 less. Vocational instruction took a little bit bigger hit with about $200,000 less spent, and special needs this year were a little bit less as well, about $300,000 worth of savings there. Instructional support, that's where most of the cuts occurred, about $4 million instructional support, that's classroom aids, but that's also technology equipment, and there was a lot of choices made this year to defer a lot of that spending. Pupil support was one of the areas that actually went up. It went up about $200,000, and that's mostly your transportation cost, and that's a challenging area, you can see that's gone up each of the last several years. Not a lot you can do when shopping for that piece of it, and you ultimately had about, like I said, $200,000, $260,000 spent more than the prior year there. Sites and buildings is the utility cost as well as capital needs. This is that long-term facilities maintenance spending that I was talking about earlier. You had some special dollars set aside for that, and I believe that was a roof repair at the 140 for that. And then finally, debt service. You'd entered into some leases for technology equipment in prior years, and you have to make payments on those, and ultimately, that was a larger amount than the prior years when it comes to that spending. So if we put this all together and take a look at the district's financial health, to jump ahead here to the fund balance page. There's the surplus. It's the first surplus that the district has had in the last five years. We actually grew fund balance for the first time, going from a $1,670,000 fund balance to a $2.8 million fund balance at the end of 2018. Now, that fund balance is broken out into various components. Some of those dollars are restricted. They come from the state with strings attached. It's funding that you receive, but you need to spend on a specific purpose. Most of it is capital related. You can see a negative amount for the capital projects levy, a negative amount for long-term facilities maintenance. That means that you overspent on your allotment, and you will be reimbursed with future aids and levies in future years on that. There's also a big set aside for operating capital. Those dollars need to be set aside for equipment purchases and other capital needs of the district, and there's a special new set aside for medical assistance fund that you receive, making sure those get put back into the special education program. So what's left over is the unassigned fund balance, and that's the barometer on which to gauge the district's financial health. That went from $691,000 last year to $2,690,000 this year. And your fund balance policy here at the district, which is what the board says should be your level of financial health says, we want that to be between 8 and 12% of a year's worth of spending. And to end the 2018 fiscal year, you were at 2.2. So you're moving in the right direction, but have a little bit to go on. Unfortunately, I had those numbers, but they got cut off. Last year at this time, I was telling you that you had a seven tenths of one percent fund balance. If we go back to 2014, where you're seeing that $10.4 million fund balance, you actually were at about 12 and a half percent. So you actually had exceeded your goals at that time before the challenges in the last several years. So obviously, at this pace, with these improvements that you've seen, you're moving back in the right direction, but it still might be a couple of years before you get back to within the level of financial health that you as a board have established for yourselves between that 8 and 12%. You need to balance the financial health with the operating obligations that you as a board have to the community. Let's wrap it up with a quick look at your food service fund and your community service fund. Food service had a small surplus for the year, it was about $22,000. Both revenue and spending were down in this fund for the year, and the main reason for that is just participation. Fewer meals are being served to students, and as a result, there's some challenges there on the revenue stream. But management of the food service did a nice job in reacting, responding to that, and still generating surplus in this fund for 2018. And then finally, the community service fund. This is the community education programs, the ECFE, the school readiness programs. This fund's had surplus in each of the last three years. ECFE and school readiness maintained positive fund balances at the end of the year. We do have a concern about the community education programs, but it's a lot going on there, a lot of individual programs. I'm going to ask the finance team to dig in deeper and figure out which ones are generating that, but you can see that that fund has been in deficit each of the last four years, and that deficit has grown relatively significantly from '16 through '18. So one of those programs is starting to drag that fund down in total. We want to identify that and we can respond to that just as your food service team did to the challenges they're facing on operations this year. So a lot going on, I appreciate your patience walking through all of that, and I'll leave it at that for the night, but be happy to stay for any questions you have about the audit results or the district's financial position for the year 2017.
Questions for me?
I know the answer, but I think I know the answer. But the unassigned fund balance versus the total fund balance?
Yep.
I understand that the unassigned is an indicator of your financial health, but the reality is the remainder of the fund balance, which is restricted, is still available to use in the manner in which it is assigned to be used, so...
I think that's a great question. Let me give you a... Let me give you my take on it, and I will turn over to Jeff, who might have an additional take on it. But by having those funds in place, well, first of all, fund balance does two things for you. It has a contingency in place, so you've got dollars to fall back on if you need to, and it's also there for cash flow. And so to your point that it is dollars in place, it actually represents cash in your checkbook as well.
Right.
So it provides that liquidity, and it provides financial health in the context that you've got dollars to pay the bills and make payroll every few weeks. So that's a positive. That being said, if you are trying to plan for the future and working on a collective bargaining agreement or something like that, that $702,000 in operating capital is not going to help you determine how much you can help with the medical insurance next year for your collective bargaining. It's going to have to be spent on a roof, or it's going to have to be spent on technology equipment. So that's the challenge, that the dollars that you actually have to run the district or you, as a board, to use in a discretionary way are represented in that unassigned. So I agree with you on that standpoint, but again, that being said, your policy is based on that unassigned amount, and that is really what you've used as your tool. So I would agree, it's a piece of the puzzle, but it's a piece that you don't have a lot of control over, so maybe concentrating on unassigned would probably best and the most conservative.
Right. Okay. I have another question, and Jeff, this one's probably directed at you, but there has been, I've heard some comments in the community that a part of the... Get to the right page. Yeah. Other way?
It's okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. But a part of the, what is it, 1 point, or the $2.8 million fund balance that we have right now, that the $1.1 million land sale that we just completed, that that is in that number, and therefore, a one-time, you know, one-time...
Yeah, one-time.
...fund balance?
Sure funds, yeah.
Can you clarify that that is actually not in that number?
That's not in that number.
That hasn't been?
And it is.
It's not finalized?
It is, correct, right. It's built into the budget for...
Next year.
For next year, and it'll be for this year. Kind of like a shift in the budget. So it's in the budget for 2018, '19. It'll be, it would enhance that operating cap. It'll be restricted funds. So as we built the budget for the current year, 2018, '19, we're looking at a surplus of about 1.8, and 1.1 of that will go into restricted, but the other part should be, should enhance the unassigned.
But the answer to your question is the 1.1 is not reflected in this number?
Yeah. They're not answering.
No, you did. I just wanted to, I want to say it several times.
Yeah. It's not in this, in the 2017 and 2018.
Matt, this is a question of you about, I guess I'm on the general fund expenditures per program slide here, and I'd like you to, you gave us the individual buckets, right?
Yeah.
I think you did a pretty good job codifying here. But as I was tracking, admin and district support is kind of the business office, the principals, the district office staff. Traditionally, we have run a pretty lean deal. If we were maybe heavier than other districts, it was at the building level admin by having, we had up until this year assistant principals at every elementary, and that's not necessarily something that other people do. But if you look at, what are the other buckets that you would say are labeled as in the classroom spectrum?
Yeah, let me talk about those. It really falls into three, maybe four categories, and obviously, the big one is elementary and secondary regular instruction, and that basically speaks for itself. You can see nearly half of your budget is going to $241.7 million. Vocational ed is becoming a smaller portion here at the district. That represents the fax classes, the shop classes, the traditional trade-type classes that you have, and that represented a small fraction of the budget, not even 1% for 2017, 2018. And then special ed, that's a number that you really don't have a lot of control over, basically, that represents any student, and the services provided to students on an individual education plan, an IEP. And based on the demographics each year, based on the students' needs, based on state and federal regulations, you need to service that student according to that, and the dollars associated with that are going to be spent accordingly. You receive federal special education reimbursements for that, you receive state special education as well, but those do not fully fund the program, so you're obligated to spend it, but you don't necessarily have full resources to pay for everything. You don't get the dollar-for-dollar reimbursement on that like you might for other grant-type monies. So that's one of the challenges for Jeff and his team, is to understand what that need is during the year, react, respond to that, and that's, when we talk about those revenue projections, that's why I wanted to highlight that, because on a $90 million budget to come in with 1/2% of that, that's really tricky, especially on that special ed side, to really understand where you're going to land. So those are the three main categories, and again, you can see down a little bit in special ed, but that was maybe not necessarily a conscious decision as much as it was, you know, where your demographics landed and the needs of your students, and then keeping the others relatively in line.
And then just last board meeting we just approved was two new special teachers and three paras, and that was an example of exactly what you can't plan for it, you can't account for it, it happens, and obviously, we're going to serve those students. But that would account for a budget variance versus what the budget we first approved. So taking those three buckets kind of in total, how does our district, and I don't know if you have it off the top of your head, but...
I do, actually.
How do we compare to other neighboring districts or other districts you support?
Yeah. I think this pie chart probably represents it best, and what I do is add up those three categories, and you can see that the number for 2018 ends up being about 64% of your budget. And the state a few years ago was putting out some suggestions, nothing official, that they like to see that in the high 60s up to 70% range. And if you include the instructional support category, actually, you're at 75%, excuse me, 73%, excuse me. So almost 3/4 of your dollars are getting to the classroom. Again, instructional support is the tools that you need to service the students, that's the technology equipment, iPads, textbooks, things like that, and also the classroom aides, their salaries go into that category as well. Staff development is another major category there. So I would say you're right in line with your peer group when it comes to that. The educational categories are about 2/3 of your budget. If we add instructional support, you're up to about 3/4. And again, that high 60s to low 70% range is typically what I see in districts across the state.
On that note, could you go to the page where it says expenditures per student served?
Yes. I'll point on something here.
You have...
Other than my iPhone, I don't use a lot of...
Slide 18.
Okay.
I would be happy to help you on that. Slide 18. Oh, you know what? You don't have it in your, we have it, in the communications letter.
Yeah.
Can you pull that up?
Sure. I don't know if I can, but it might, it should be in here, though. Did we miss one? I might not have covered it, but I think that we all have charts here. Spending per student is what you're looking at?
Yeah. However, I was looking, you have three buckets, Shakopee, Seven County Metro, and statewide.
Okay, yeah. I got all three here, so I can't show them all at once, but I got all three, so let's talk about them.
If we just go to total general fund expenditures, per ADM, which is essentially per student with some caveat, but the, it appears we spend, like, 2017, $11,024, and the Seven County Metro area is $12,000 on average, $12,282, which is approximately $1,000. We spend approximately $1,000 less per student than the Seven County Metro area. Can you speak to that at all, or explain?
I can. And actually, I'm going to talk about something else to give you the answer. It basically goes down to the revenue stream, and you're ultimately going to spend over time what you bring in in revenue. And the revenue from district to district across the state, there's a significant disparity between the funding that each district receives. There are three major categories when it comes to that disparity. One of those is the property tax and the operating referendum that the districts receive from the local taxpayers. It is approved by election by the taxpayers, and this might be Jeff, do you know, on a per-people basis, what you guys have here?
724.
Yeah. As I say, $300 in the local, we have the board approve, $300, and then the local.
Or 44.
700, okay. So you are below the state average when it comes to the per-people operating referendum. There are districts in the Seven County Metro that have up to $2,000 per student on an operating referendum. So you can see there's $1,300 in the crate there, that's one piece of the puzzle. And certainly, the other challenge with that, I don't want to just make that statement and walk away from it, because the property tax dollar amount per student is what it is, but when that gets sent to your community to pay for it, each community is significantly different when it comes to their tax base. If I'm in Bloomington, I've got the Mall of America, all of the hotels and all the commercial industrial property along 494, the vast majority of that burden goes to those taxpayers. So the typical $200,000 home is going to pay a lot less in Bloomington or even Prairie, which is not specific, but you get the idea of more heavily commercial industrial. When we come to Shakopee, where it's a much higher residential ratio to commercial industrial, that burden is going to fall on the taxpayer. So literally, what a $200,000 home will pay for in one of those high commercial industrial districts versus what you pay for. They could be actually having a higher levy per student at that $2,000, but the homeowner is actually paying a smaller amount because the majority of it is going to a different property. So that's the challenge that some of the suburbs, the experts have when it comes to that piece. So that's one of the reasons for that. Another reason is compensatory revenue, and compensatory revenue is an additional general education funding that the state gives to high-poverty districts. It's based on your free and reduced lunch count, and depending on where you fall within that, you could receive up to $2,000 or $3,000 more per student if you're a high-poverty district versus a low-poverty district. Again, I don't know exactly where you fall on that. I'm guessing that you're falling on the lower end of that, and as a result, your revenue stream is going to be a little... Yeah, we're on the lower end. Okay. And then the final piece is special education funding, and that again is just driven by the demographics of your students and whatever happens there. So again, this ratio of special ed to general ed is pretty typical, so I don't think that that's probably a major factor, and it's probably going to fall to the operating referendum and the compensatory money. So you're getting less revenue at about $1,000 to $1,500 per year, and that translates into only being able to spend what you have coming in, and you're ultimately going to spend about $1,500 less than a typical district would do in the Seven County Metro area or so.
Per student.
Per student, right.
So we're doing a really good job educating our students with less...
Fewer.
...revenue than the Seven County Metro area.
So Matt, I have a question for you. Tons of data. So if we were to close the books just for a second, forget the numbers, you have had the luxury or the pleasure of audience for a while. What, in your opinion, is working well right now in our finance office, and why?
That's a great question. I hesitate to editorialize, but I do have to...
I know, but I wanted to...
Give credit where credit is due. And I would talk about Jeff, and also talk about Suzanne. I have a pleasure in working with both of them, and they both did an excellent job. And I think the key, in my opinion, is the communication to the board and understanding their role in that piece of it. Again, in a perfect environment, the board receives adequate information to put a budget together that moves you towards your financial goals, and receive information during the year to allow you to monitor that budget, to know that you're on track or off track. And if you're on track, great, we'll just move forward. If you're off track, give you an opportunity to react and respond to that. And I think the consciousness of the need for that and the skillset of the folks within your finance department to mechanically provide that to you with reports and communication and awareness, I think, has improved significantly over the course of the last couple of years. And when I show up, it should be a boring presentation, probably already is, but it should be boring in the context that this is information you should already have, and that you should know that that's where you land. I shouldn't be coming and clawing at my hat where we landed financially for the year, because you should know month-to-month how it's going and where you're going to be. And I believe you've got a team in place that's been providing that for you the last couple of years. And when you need to make a tough decision as a board from a governance standpoint, you want to make sure that that decision and the results that you're told are going to happen are going to be executed. And I think you, as a board, probably feel like you're more confident that that's been happening and that these results that you're seeing are what you had planned, and that's the direction that you wanted to go, and that may have not been the case in recent history. So that'll be my take.
I appreciate your honesty, and that's how it feels. Being there always feels as though we are, I can't say overly informed, because I don't know if it's possible to be overly informed, but the fact of the matter is, when you sit at this table, and whoever comes up here to sit at this table, you will make a bad decision if you're provided with bad information. It's just the way it's going to go. If you aren't provided with complete information that's accurate, you have a much better chance of making the right call. So a lot of times, we don't necessarily know that. You know, we're taking a lot of our information on good faith and trusting the people that sit in this office. We know that they're rolling up their sleeves and have the students' best interests and the taxpayer's best interest at hand as they're doing their daily jobs. So I may be outgoing, but it is nice to have a little peace of mind knowing that the information that's being provided to us now, and dare I say, go with a word for, hopefully, and definitely will be, information that you can bounce a quarter off of, which is really important in order to make your decisions and make your decisions. Thank you. And team?
It's a team, yeah.
Anything else for Matt? If there's anything else?
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, entertain, Matt. We're going to take some action here.
Correct.
Intervent motion to accept the 27, 2018 school district audit as presented.
Who wants? Angela? You want to say?
Okay. Further discussion? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, Matt, which you carry.
Okay. All right. Should I bring... Yeah? You know what? When I was getting up and looking at it, I think I want to bring this agreement back up for a second. The grid of numbers, I think before we formally do this, we just, listening to what you're saying here, you know, I'd like to double-check. I don't know if you can circle Sarah, circle initial and say, "We want to confirm the numbers in the grid." This grid.
Yeah, we're looking at it.
What do you mean to confirm?
What do you mean?
I want to make sure these are all the right numbers.
Okay.
I looked at them, and I talked to Arifabon, we want to make sure that all the numbers from there are the same numbers that are in the contract.
Is there some reason to think that they may not be, or you're just saying, let's be doubly certain before we sign it?
I'm saying, let's be doubly certain.
Sure, sure.
And I want to make sure, there's one that I looked at the contract, and I want to make sure the numbers on here match that contract that I saw.
Sure.
So that's what I want to do, and I know you were taking action on it, so for my sake, I just heard you say it bounced a quarter off it, as I'm feeling a little uncertain about making sure, I want to make sure.
So what do we do?
Do we have to read?
Do we have to go back, as didn't we?
They already approved it, however, we could amend, if we could leave it as is and come back with an amended version.
If we need to.
If we need to, otherwise, this carries, and we just simply move it forward at the next meeting.
That's good.
I think so, too.
Is that something that would require additional board action, or is that something that we could agree to now and I sign later if we need to?
I like that you've got it all on the table right here. I think that we should make note on the agreement, and both the chair and the clerk who are initiating this should initial those notes. And then, as you mentioned, if that grid summary is adjusted, that will immediately link them back to the board.
Okay. That's good.
It doesn't stop us from doing anything?
No, 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 good, agreed.
Okay.
Appreciate that, yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
And I would say that's probably, if there is some difference, that's probably the first remedy.
first remedy that we were talking about earlier.
Arif, you good with that?
Yeah, I am. I don't think it changes the overall credit that the district is showing. I noticed that that number's not right for the total fee, so we need to adjust that.
All right, let's come on up.
Thank you.
All right, item 10, is there any others? Otherwise, move on to 11, committee reports? Committee reports?
I gave the policy.
Personnel, man? Make personnel list, you got anything? All right, let's go around the horn first. Sarah, Ashley, anything for you two?
Do you know?
Well, yes, no, yes?
No.
No? Have a look, okay. Ms., anything?
Next month, we'll be bringing all the course proposals for the upcoming registration process. It's always fun, we have DAC, our district advisor council meeting next week, so they're part of that feedback relief, and so that information's all being finalized by our district, and that's what we're looking on right now.
Thanks. Bob?
We're good.
All right, Dave?
Good.
Good.
Excellent.
Tom Mitchell is playing coppers tonight at 8:00, and he has to end it.
By himself, or?
Is it all a team with him?
I'm fantastic.
Sean?
I've got nothing.
All right, I've got nothing. 12, recognition of visitors to the board meeting. We recognize you anyways. I recognize you all.
Yeah.
Literally, I recognize everybody. All right, number 13, upcoming meetings and important dates. The only change I made is we do not have BAC Wednesday, because we're not at one meeting a month. Otherwise, I don't know what it is. Any questions on meetings? Again, we have two meetings and other things to add. The January meeting for the board and GL, we need to, Sarah, put that on here at some point. What, that's the...
January.
Okay. Just want to call it out, that's a special day. All right, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Tony?
I'll say.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? I'll keep it.